It feels weird to have your phone.
I'm from Africa.
Yeah, it's like, you know.
Are you guys good?
From two deployments.
You guys see here?
No.
No, go ahead.
Baby's good, good?
All good.
Elani?
Good? Cuatro meses.
Oh, how wonderful.
Yes.
It's a baby boy or baby girl?
A girl.
Oh, how wonderful.
Get it on.
Awesome.
They're in a shoebox.
See, we get it in there.
I put it in a pretty much.
So, we're gonna commence the Fourth of July's Last Seventy-Fifth Anniversary Committee. The time now is six oh nine, Wednesday, May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, I'll have my dad. Starts off with a pledge of allegiance. You can stand up there if we had to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ya no puede, pues.
Madam, search, roll call?
Yes, for the roll call. We have Vice Mayor Blans, present. Commissioner Canada Blanca, present. Ivan Chavez Jr., Commissioner, present. And Mayor Eric Yezco, John and Luciana Suárez, not present. Members Lenny Carabia, present. Ivan Chavez Senior, here. Natalie Villan, present. And Eduardo Mujinha is on his way. You have four.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next item, citizen presentations. There's nobody here.
No, yes, no presentation. And on their new business, Item A, opening remarks by Chairman, Commissioner, Ivan Chavez Jr.
I just wanna say I'm thankful again for the opportunity to chair this board. I know how important it is. Uh, growing up in this neighborhood, it's a, a long tradition, a long history, seventy-five years. Something to be proud of, and I'm thankful for all you guys being here. Uh, and, uh, happy that all of you guys were appointed. You've all been a part, a part of a bunch of different boards. You love giving back to the city, and, and I'm excited to see what we can come up with for this event. So, that's it. We'll move on to...
Yes, well, I, I don't for the discussion in reference to Fourth of July's Last Seventy-Fifth Anniversary Event, Celebration in the City of West Miami.
So, what you have in front of you, uh, you have a packet that is basically just highlighting, uh, past, I think it's twenty nineteen, Fourth of July events, just to see a little bit of, or some of the items that were included in that event, since we're combining the seventy-fifth anniversary this year due to the elections that occurred in April, uh, with the Fourth of July event. So, we have a packet that breaks down, um, how we're gonna go through receiving donations, which Carrie is gonna be heading that, uh, section of what we're trying to do here. And the rest of it's gonna be opened up now to discussions to see what it is we want to, to have there that day. Uh, Madam Manager already secured the Fourth of July fireworks. It was a budget given of thirteen thousand.
Yes, you gave us a cap of thirteen thousand. We received two proposals. We went with a one for twelve thousand. I signed that agreement, and I, it's, it's, uh, in the works.
Perfect. And then she had the great idea as well of talking to them to see if they can do anything, uh, to highlight that it's our seventy-fifth anniversary as well with the fireworks, so.
Maybe part of their display would include something with a ni- nice seventy-five highlighter.
Alright, perfect. So, with that being said, now we're, tables open for discussion to see what ideas we all can come up with and make this a great event.
The thirteen thousand dollars, that's solely from, uh, revenues from the city?
That is, uh, recor- uh, up to now, we don't have any other revenue.
We don't have any donations?
We budgeted enough money in the budget this year, uh, for these events. Uh, we didn't think that we would be reaching out to vendors. We didn't even know if we would have these type of events because of COVID. Um, right now, we're not depending all relying on any, uh, corporate or sponsor contribution.
Have we reached out to any, uh, of the ones from the past that have contributed?
Not yet, not yet, because we wanted this committee to meet so that we can get some direction.
And there was a question of why we're meeting tonight instead of next week. Uh, we just wanted to get the ball rolling already, since we're a little bit short on time. We still have time, but get the ball rolling in the right direction already. And in the other packet, there was, or is it in this?
I don't have that one. I have this. I have sponsorship.
This one? A sponsorship packet?
Yeah.
Uh, that's an example of what's gonna be sent out. So, there's, there's been some discussion also. The highest number there is fifteen hundred. So, for local businesses and stuff like that, that would be a good number for them. But in the past, uh, you'll see in the packet Baptist Hospital donated five thousand. So, we're, we're talking about making another packet to send out to, to, uh, bigger companies to see if we can get larger donations.
Maybe increasing the sponsorship level for those.
So, quick question, these, these are, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
These are sent out to the sponsors?
Yes.
We don't go out and do legwork?
Yeah, thank you.
No?
No, I mean, oh, sorry.
No, no.
You all decide how you wanna do it. That's in the past, that was a letter that went with a sponsorship packet to the vendor, and something was signed by the mayor, and the mayor basically.
And that's every business in the area?
Yes, we sent to, uh, local banks. We sent out to publics in the past.
Restaurants.
Sponsors in the back of the last announcement to the residents. You have a list of sponsors.
Okay, cool.
And in the breakdown of their revenue and expenses, it's detailed there.
Right here in the memorandum is what the manager referring to, that you have the different sponsors and how much they donated. And then also in the back of the seventieth anniversary pamphlet, they have pictures and pages of the different people that donated as well. I'll pass this around, 'cause we are actually gonna try to emulate this. And, uh, Madam Manager is gonna speak with Q in the back to start updating the photos and of the different departments and, uh...
Different, uh, logos and, well, you already got that one.
Yeah, this is what the front cover's gonna be.
Using that, that, uh, cover? Which was the one that the commission, we gave them three options last year during the budget presentation, and that's the one that we wanted to promote as our seventy-fifth anniversary logo.
If I may make a suggestion, I'm probably speaking to the choir on this. Like you said before, in an attempt not to reinvent the wheel, the, the seventieth anniversary one was well done, had the music and the tent over at Cooper Park. We don't have to do any of that this time. I think we have the event already for the Fourth of July.
Right.
So, basically, piggyback some of this stuff. It's kinda like the same genre anyway. Celebration of America and seventy-fifth anniversary. So, all the thing, all the elements are there. So, just kinda piggyback what we're doing, you know, update these things, maybe get some seventy-fifth anniversary banners made up.
Right.
To hang at the rec on the pole so people...
And some decorations that would be ordered, and you can maybe, you know, to bring the attention of our...
Maybe update on the, upgrade the, the food from hot dogs to maybe a little more substantial, 'cause it's the seventy-fifth. We can go back to hot dogs.
He has a...
Yeah, and not to throw, not to throw a wrench into the plans. I just, I had a, had an idea, because, um, it's been, you know, two years since people have really gone together, and, um, I've been to some cities' small celebrations for Fourth of July and for Christmas and stuff, and I saw some things that I wanted to bring here. I think it would be really nice if we could do a parade. Maybe starting at City Hall and going down to the rec center and having the celebration continue there. Or, I mean, that would be ideal, but I, I leave the logistics up to the city and the fire department and so forth. But, um, we, we can, as part of the sponsorship packages, invite the local businesses to bring a decorated car with the Fourth of July, uh, theme and their logo as part of the, what they're paying to, to, you know... And then invite residents if they wanna join, as long as, maybe the only thing we say is, "Hey, decorate your car for the Fourth of July, bring your kids, bring flags and stuff, and then, you know, close off the road and do like an early thing, uh, bring it down to the, to the rec center where we're having the, the party and end it there."
I love that.
Just to like, bring some...
Right, yeah. I like that a lot. We used to, remember, we used to do the Veterans Day Parade?
We used to have one.
Yeah.
You know? Actually, there's a gentleman here.
A Memorial Day, too.
He's in charge, uh, I think he's still the chairman of some kind of veterans organization here in Miami-Dade County. He has actually asked me a couple of times in the past if we are going to ever do this parade again.
Cava, you set him out?
And he took, you know, so maybe I'll reach out to him.
We can invite him. I know that planning an event, part of my job is planning events. I know it's very intense, and I know it costs a lot of money, so I'm not trying to put extra work on anyone. I understand. I'm happy to help out in any way that I can, but it's kind of something that maybe can come together easily with inviting the residents and the, and the, and the, uh, the business owners or the, the businesses that, that are gonna be part of the sponsorship packages. Just saying, "Hey, can you bring a vehicle?" Maybe we can reach out to a dealership and have them loan us some convertibles or something.
Get a fire truck in there.
Get the fire truck, get the police cars in there.
Definitely, the kids will love that.
The kids will love it.
The parade would be super cool.
We can invite, if one of the schools nearby have a band or, I don't know if the, the elementary school, but maybe...
They don't have a band, but you could always, uh...
We can invite them to do some sort of performance.
Get a couple of classes from Sylvania, and then march in the parade like they used to.
Exactly. All dressed up with the kids.
Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts area chapters, the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts.
Well, you know that, the, the, that little external building at Sylvania was the original Boy Scout.
Yeah. I mean, Coral Gables High School is not exactly in West Miami, but maybe they can loan us their van, you know, to do a little show with the kids. Or West Miami Middle, if they have a band, even though it's not in the city technically, but...
Oh, it's a great idea. Sure, you get freebie to get to the park and...
Oh, the freebie, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if the route is from here to the park?
Yeah, I don't, the logistics, I'll leave it up to the city.
I'm just saying, it's kinda short, so it'd be great to have a parade. Maybe extend the route a little bit?
Yeah.
So that, more of the neighborhood, nothing crazy.
I was saying City Hall to the rec center. City Hall down, or, or Cooper Park.
Well, that's, uh...
That's not too bad, that's like...
About a mile, right?
Yeah, it's a decent walk.
Yeah, yeah.
Not even really.
Yeah, and it goes slow.
Right.
But that's a nice little walk.
So, so we'll have the, uh, corporate, corporate neighbors element, and then the element of the veterans. Hopefully, I can get them here.
Yeah.
They, they, you know, they like that stuff.
They used to bring, uh, their vehicles.
Yeah.
Old Jeeps and, uh, it was Cava and Hispanic Vietnam veterans.
Hopefully, he's still involved with that organization, and if he, and if he is, he can...
Ninety percent of Cava is dead by the way.
Uh, we have a, a military affairs board in the county that I can also, you know, one of my colleagues runs that. I can reach out and see if they can bring the cars or...
Oh, yeah.
That'd be awesome, yeah.
Bring in, uh, you know, yeah.
Fourth of July, have some military team.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so it's Fourth of July, and then we end at the park with the seventy-fifth anniversary component.
If they can get a whole of, uh, if Southcom won't do it, they can contact like, um, the two-sixtieth MI over on Seventh Avenue and Twenty-eighth Street, 'cause they've got Humvees and things of that nature. They could, you know, they could probably run a couple of them, if they need to run them anyway.
How about an old firetruck?
The city has an old firetruck. The county...
You haven't missed much yet.
Got an old firetruck.
Hello, everybody.
Mr. Mayor?
Ivan. I know my son, when he was young, the organization called Young Marines of Big Town.
They used to help run Young Marines. Used to help run the Young Marines on Hundred and Sixth Street.
That's, um, that's where he went. I don't know if they would like to be there if it exists.
Yeah, it's still around.
Yep.
It's still around.
Junior ROTCs and all that.
JROTC from South Miami, I almost guaranteed would do it, or the Gables.
That would be nice to this, this area feeds to South Miami. A lot of those kids either come to the rec or still come to the rec.
I can, I can go contact those guys and see, uh...
So far, it's, uh, we just mentioned that Madam Manager secured the fireworks for us. I, I didn't mention also, one of the police officers, right, is gonna be the DJ?
Oh, we have a DJ who's offered to do the music, and that's Elvis Forale.
And then Natalie threw out the idea of a parade leading into the, the park, since we're combining the Fourth of July with the seventy-fifth anniversary, since we missed it in April due to the election. And I think a lot of us are on board with that. It's a great idea.
Yeah.
So, that's where we're at now.
So, you want me to contact the JROTCs at South Miami and the Gables? This is, what's the exact date on this?
July, fourth.
It's th- on the fourth.
It's a Monday.
Wednesday, I believe, right? I'm sorry.
The end of a long weekend.
On what time would it be?
It is a Monday.
Oh, time.
So, what do you, what time do you guys think? 'Cause if we're gonna have the Fourth of July events in the past, if you could see here, they had, uh, you know, bounce houses, rock climbing walls, stuff like that. So, you want the people to be able to enjoy that?
Yeah.
But also, you know, not be too early, right?
No, not too early.
Uh, what time are we thinking?
For the parade?
To start the parade and then, but to get to the park in time to allow everyone to enjoy the different festivities.
I think the parade should, 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 uh, uh, you know, approach the, uh, the rec right about the time that we, you know, we're supposed to start. So, if it's gonna take thirty minutes, the parade starts thirty minutes right before.
So, the first hard time is when the fireworks go off? What time do the fireworks?
No, no, that's too late.
No, no, listen, you got, this is, you gotta, you gotta plan backwards. The thing you know is gonna happen is the fireworks.
What time?
At nine o'clock, nine o'clock.
At nine o'clock they happen?
That's at nine o'clock.
So, for an hour before that, people are arriving or whatever, so we can plan for the parade to kick off, you know?
At six o'clock.
Yeah, that way everybody get...
Six o'clock is still daylight for kids to do the kid stuff.
Even eight o'clock, you still have...
And that'd be cutting it close.
Fireworks are probably gonna go off at around eight thirty, a quarter, nine.
We don't know how many, if, if the will of the committee and the commission is to go with the parade first, I would try to start at five o'clock. It takes a while to organize them. Organize, I would start.
You gotta factor in Cuban time.
You gotta set them up earlier. Actually, you gotta have them here by four, four-thirty, so that they can start to set up. I have, we gotta talk to the chief about an escort, um, you know, with, with the parade. I would say, have those participants here by four fifteen, and the ladies come back in. And then start your event in general with a parade, and that's when we go, we go, at five o'clock.
Yep. I'm a little rusty here. What's the composition of the parade? What's... We don't know yet.
Corporate, corporate neighbors, business, and then we're gonna invite the, the veterans, maybe even Boy Scouts.
Schools.
Or ROTC, they say.
ROTCs, whoever is available.
When was the last parade down here? Freebie.
Oh, man. Veterans Day, a few years back.
I remember that way back, yeah, that's the, the one I remember.
That might also depend on how many people say yes, or capping how many people say yes. Everybody wants to do it. The street might not be long enough.
Yeah, well, at some, at some point, we gotta see who's gonna confirm. And then from there, if it's too many, first choice I would imagine would be, if they were gonna bring twenty bodies, bring ten, so they can still be represented.
And the Cobras over the Cavaliers.
Always. And if stingeries show up, I'll bet they're off.
Yeah, no, no, that's, now we're reaching for it.
Yeah, you should be one of those.
It's a great idea.
Starting off stingery here, man. Havana high.
So now...
That explains a lot.
So, we have the details of the parade and who we're trying to encompass there, who the groups we're trying to, to include there. Now, once we get to the park, um, Fourth of July already has, are we gonna be with the same, more or less, items there?
You decide if you wanna have, uh, like a little carnival for the kids, um, and the face painters, like we all do that.
And then they had a rock climbing wall. Was it like a little fair?
Yeah, we have, later, we get equipment for the different groups.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to...
Contact the different...
See if you can, yeah.
I'll, I'll contact the JROTCs.
So, we'll stay with all that stuff? We'll piggyback off of that, it sounds, it sounds cool, right?
No.
Because you have, for one to three years old, and then three to five, we break up, we broke up these equipment for age groups.
So, what are we, what are we thinking for highlighting the seventy-fifth anniversary, though? Once we get there, is there any ideas? The manager, Madam Manager mentioned the firework, you know, potentially highlighting that. Is there anything that you guys can think of during the event? Uh, I was thinking maybe a piñata, seventy, number seventy-five, having kids whack at that, take a candy, like, what else? I mean, is that's a good idea or not?
I think the watermelon is always good.
Yeah.
Um, question, I don't know if anybody asked this question, but budget, what's, what's the budget for this?
I, I would say that we would probably be within the twenty-five thousand dollar range.
What's the, the, forget about the seventy-five for a moment. What's the la- what was the last budget for, for the Fourth of July?
It was, uh, seventeen thousand dollars.
No.
Like twelve or thirteen for the fireworks, but then...
It was seventeen thousand, four forty-nine. And then, we're not assuming donations at the moment, but the donations in twenty nineteen were thirteen thousand, three hundred.
Like, so only four thousand came out of the recreation center.
But are we talking about Fourth of July, or talking about the last seventy-fifth?
It's, uh, twenty nineteen, Fourth of July.
Okay, okay.
I don't know what it was for the seventieth, uh, budget.
No, the seventy was a, it was an event, because it was actually mine. It was separate, right? Yeah, it was separate, it was like Cooper Park.
It was an art show, like a...
It, it was a, it was a art festival, you know, so you had a tent with artists and... The fourth is definitely picking up a lot of the budgeted items for the seventy-fifth.
Yeah.
We just have to dress it up like the seventy-fifth.
Yeah, 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 no, and, and, we don't have a lot of time. I mean, believe it, believe it or not.
No, I catch you.
The Fourth of July is right here, you know?
Banners, if we can get some banners made up, that would be...
I, I was going to talk to Pina and obviously throw this out there just to see if you'd be interested and see if we can get on a projector, you know, they have these big projectors that project onto the, the racquetball court wall. We usually display our American flag there.
Luis Garcia.
To see if we can place the American flag in another part of the building and put there, have a, a seal done and project it throughout the late afternoon, we can...
Yeah, okay, nice.
Yeah, I think that, that would, you know, catch everybody's attention. Um, basically, uh, happy birthday, City of West Miami, and then the big seventy-five.
How much would it cost to make pendants? To give to the kids, you know what I mean? Couple hundred pendants to hand out, people walking around doing their seventy-fifth anniversary. Just a little seventy-fifth flavor.
How about, um, like, when you go somewhere and they have like, um, a display of the history? Like a slideshow of everything through the history of West Miami? Somewhere, let it, let it start going while, if people wanna see going back to the, I don't know if we have anything memorabilia here.
Like they do in funerals.
Well, they gotta...
But in funerals, but, but have it, have it, have it.
Good analogy, good analogy. I mean, they got a bunch of different pictures.
Okay, yeah.
Wow, thank you for that.
I think we'll get a jolt.
But it is probably the best part of the funeral.
Maybe project those, make like...
No, it's just, a lot of people know our history.
Oh, you already got a bunch of pictures.
The ones that we have, yeah. Yeah, but make like a slideshow that is going.
Yeah, just have them flash.
We can do that.
Sure, sure, something like that, yeah. 'Cause you're not gonna be printing nowadays, printing is expensive.
And Pina has those pictures in files. And they have all pictures.
Yeah.
But if we do a collage dating back seventy-five years, I mean, Luciano's gonna be in every picture.
Yeah.
He's not here, he's not here.
He's not here.
That's a wasted shot, yeah.
Actually, he's chief to do the narration. He has a release.
Oh, that's nice.
Chief Andre.
In the, in the fiftieth anniversary, you worked it, remember?
Yes, yes.
Who's, who's the longest residing resident here?
John Parker is one, is the younger.
Probably Mrs. Bader.
On Fourteenth Street, no, Twelfth Street.
Twelfth Street.
On Twelfth Street.
Her grandson used to be a firefighter with Coral Gables, right? Mister and Mrs. Bader.
He, she used to work for Coral Gables.
And her, and her son or grandson, um, worked for...
I know she used to work for Coral Gables for a long time, for the City of Coral Gables. I don't think she's doing well.
I think that could be the master of ceremonies for the parade, is the longest living resident.
And then after that is John Parker.
And then John, John Parker.
Yeah, because Elma Beckham...
Put them all in a convertible.
And she was the longest serving.
Waving.
There's Nikki Shirley, she lives on Twelfth, too. I don't know what her last name is.
What?
Shirley, her name's Shirley, but I don't know her last name.
How long's she been here?
I don't know, but she's pretty old. She's pretty, pretty old.
Mouser, huh? Mouser.
Mouser.
That's another one.
We can have them do a speech. If you can find like residents from back in the...
That they're willing to.
If they're willing to, put them in a convertible, have them wave to the guy, that'd be pretty cool.
Crawl my way to the door.
Or any old veterans that are still around.
Mouser used to be in the planning and zoning board.
Yeah, he was a...
A chairman, I think, of the planning and zoning board.
Boy, does he have a story.
Lenny, Lenny just touched on it, uh, it's another thing that we need to think about, if we want to go ahead and print these out, like we did in the past.
Slideshow.
Slideshow. No, printing would be too expensive and us...
Nobody prints anything.
It's just to throw it out there, so we all agree that do a slideshow and then...
I just went to a business meeting in Woodwood, and I hand out my, my business card, and the guy is like, the guy's from New York. He goes, "Oh, you still have those?"
Yeah.
You, you have everybody at the Fourth of July hold up their cell phone, turn on their Bluetooth, and you send them this at the same time.
If you all will please look at your phones.
Yeah, scan the QR code, and the slideshow appears on your phone. West Miami in twenty twenty-two.
Just do it the old-fashioned way, man.
A slideshow. Why not try to get the pictures of the commission members that have served?
Oh, that'd be very nice, that'd be very nice.
With their name, a face, and their name, if we got pictures.
'Cause everybody's contributed through the years, yeah.
The older commissioners.
That would be very, very nice.
Let's see if, if, uh, Mary Mujinha...
If I don't wanna hold all of them.
If he can get in touch with everyone that's had a part in the...
What do you do with the old pictures?
On the seventy-fifth anniversary banner, there's a QR code.
A QR code?
They could sit there and go like that?
Yeah.
And they watch the video on their phone.
Oh, okay, so you don't...
I have not.
And you can share it.
I don't know how to do any of that stuff.
But we probably have some everybody.
Come see me at the...
No.
Oh, you know how to do it.
The President Mayor, Mayor Rodriguez, Mayor Mujinha.
I'm sure you upload, and then you download the QR code.
Tabasa.
Please don't mention.
Belia, you should have Belia.
Tabasco too, just don't call him on a city phone.
He passed away.
Tell me about it, that's my curse.
Eh, no.
Yeah, Eddie won't ever talk to you again.
I spoke with Belia and Mother's Day.
Maybe Martin Yellen, I may have. Yeah, you have a box in your beside and I have in my right.
It would be awesome. It's Fourth of July also, it should be tough to have them in person there, but it would be cool if some of them were there and they can say something about.
Be part of the parade.
I don't know if Belia will be here by then. I, Belia called me for Mother's Day.
She called me.
What makes it tough with Fourth of July to have people actually present?
Yeah.
So incorporating maybe some of these pictures plus the elected officials.
Okay.
So let's see, so we have a game plan going forward, the, the parade, how are we going to head that? Who's going to? The Veterans Affairs, you're going to reach out to. I'm going to reach out to the other, to the other group.
Yeah, your dad has like all seven.
And I'm going to check the JROTCs to see who can participate. I guess, uh, sir, it wouldn't be a bad idea for you to go to Slovenia where you grew up and see if the principal can get a class or two to participate. They'd love to see you there.
I'll go by Slovenia for sure, yeah. It's a great idea.
One every now and then.
Or you could use the rec kids, you know.
Yeah, I think we know somebody for that too.
With the old rec kids or the new kids?
Madam Manager will speak with Police Chief.
Is there a difference?
So.
That says the old ones raising the new ones.
And I guess in the forms that Carrie will send out for donations, could there be something in there to see if they want to join us in the parade? And then their banners could actually be on our parade.
I have a question, um, Mayor Muñoz mentioned that at the last anniversary party, there was like an art. Did you charge the vendors?
And they're all Slovenic.
Maybe that, that could be a component because that brings in more revenue? Like, I know that it's a lot contacting the folks, but if you have a.
For an art festival, the problem is, is at the break, we're dealing with Cooper Park.
Oh, right, 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 right.
Is the only place that we could actually shoot the fireworks because of the proximity to the homes, I think that, I, I mean, Mr. Chavez.
Yeah, you gotta have setbacks.
And Vice Mayor Blan is, will agree that the fire department probably won't let us shoot from the, from Cooper Park.
Yeah, yeah, so you had tents last time, right? For the vendors, you had tents and stuff?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
There was a participation.
So it doesn't really fit in this event to have.
No, the.
No, thank you, Josh, no.
I don't know.
No, okay, okay, I was just throwing that.
Do we, do we want banners? I don't want to kill this, it's not like my favorite thing, I'm just saying, do we want banners to hang their seventy-fifth anniversary like four?
Say a few and we, maybe we walk into the park, the projected one on the side of the racquetball.
Who makes those and who can handle it?
Pina and the printer that he works out with.
I think it's a good idea to ban.
Yeah, you, you should have some anniversary banners.
Yes, definitely.
Just in case the lights go off and.
It would be this, this collage that we, that we offer.
Yeah, yeah.
Or it could be something as simple as the logo.
The seventy-fifth.
Seventy-fifth, whatever you decide.
By the way, do we, um, what's the name of the guy or the company that advertised on the, on the permit or West Miami? Is he willing again to, to do that? Do you remember that he had seventy year?
Garbage?
Yeah.
Oh, that, that, he's already doing his, his, um, the seventy-fifth anniversary logo is already in the containers.
Oh, it is already?
It's already placed in the containers. What we can do is ask him to put our event or to put our logo there on the actual small billboard that he has on top of it.
So the seventy-fifth is already on the, on the?
A logo, so let me, the logo, on the bottom part of it.
I have a question.
No, 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 I, I haven't noticed, I haven't noticed.
I haven't noticed.
Yeah, because I thought it was the seventieth, the, the one still there.
It was, but I believe Pina has already given him the artwork and I see he already did.
Oh, okay, alright, I'll look out next time.
For the event, since we're talking about doing a parade down Sixty Second, what about putting these on the light poles? Like they have in certain cities, the banners on the poles that, uh.
We, you mean on the light poles, like along Southwest Sixth Street?
Is there any brackets?
Down Sixty Second.
No, down Sixty Second, but is there any brackets on?
Going down from Sixty Second to the park, having the seventy-fifth anniversary.
We have to get permission from the county.
The county.
And that would be a long process, right?
I don't know anybody, uh, that, that department has changed, the people that we dealt with before are probably not there anymore. I know they have a new director, but we can try.
Just along the parade route so it's all extra highlighted. And Natalie came up with the idea of stickers?
Well, I mean, for the water bottles.
For the water bottles, just keep highlighting that.
It's not a big ticket item.
Yeah, it was a good idea.
Seventy-fifth anniversary stickers?
The stickers, yeah, to put on, um, the water bottles, but I, I know that printing stickers can be an unnecessary expense, you know.
Well, we can buy some, I mean, I want to have him.
Now that we're on water bottles, food, it's a completely different thing if there's vendors or there's the donation food, the regular hot dogs.
Right.
It's a different setup, it's a different.
Yeah, what are we?
And we've never done food trucks at the, well, yeah, we did, there was like two food trucks at the Red.
A while back, but it wasn't an event, it was just food trucks.
And I don't know, the turnout, I don't remember, but I don't think it was.
We're giving out free food.
Yeah, one, one doesn't go right.
No, no, I'm.
I like that idea of food trucks myself, yeah. The food is.
What's a turnout usually on the Fourth of July here for the, uh?
That's a very good question. The turnout is very good as we get closer to shooting the fireworks, because it is a holiday, that's a long.
The thing is, again, a lot of people.
People go to the beach usually on the way back, they come.
It's free.
They go on their pools or they spend the day looking at something that normally they don't go to during a weekday.
We've had some anti-cooper work.
The turnout is not that good early. It gets better around seven thirty, PM, Mahomeno, that's when you see your crowds walking.
Right.
Because they come for the fireworks.
Yeah.
But if we advertise a parade, then it might draw bigger crowd earlier.
It may draw a different crowd.
Earlier on to.
A different crowd. No, I was thinking because of the food, uh, the food trucks and the free food, it's, you know, it's.
Meaning what was kind of packaged together in the agenda?
It's not a, not a good idea, it's one or the other.
It's one or the other, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, hot dogs or the.
Yeah, the free and, uh, no, no, no. No, no, no.
No, no, we're just saying, it doesn't go one or, one or the other.
I will, I will say the, the.
Well, no, I mean, the, the event itself.
But was the turnout, did they get a good, like, return of the people? Were people buying stuff from the?
Well, that, that food trucks, we had a few during the art festival and we had another event where we had food trucks and they played very well.
Yeah.
Actually Halloween.
Yeah.
We had food trucks.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Halloween.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, at some point we had a process. For dessert.
For dessert and for.
And then, and then we'd still have the watermelon.
You do have to bring them on the inside.
Giving them.
Then they're taking a fart.
And the hot dogs and.
It was in the back street.
Yeah, the thing is also we had to, we had to fall ahead of time because there are probably a lot of people already.
There's a question that was brought up was, uh, and it's been brought up in the past, if this has to absolutely be done on the Fourth of July on that Monday, was that voted on already?
It's always on the front of life.
The fireworks are on the Fourth of July.
Right, okay.
See, look, I'm a poet, see the point, if, if you start giving any.
It's always being.
I, I think if you move it to another day, your, your turnout's not going to be so good because a lot of people go away on the Fourth and then they come back home because they got to work on the Fifth.
Right.
So if you do it on the Saturday, people are not going to be here or, you know, whatever.
Okay, so.
The long weekend, don't mess with it, people are at the beach or doing something else.
Uh, actually, this one should be okay because it's a Monday.
A Monday.
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday, so, so people already coming back from, you know, uh, yeah, from the long weekend.
So we have the parade, we have the different items that we're going to be having on site, the food, we finally decided, have we decided if we want to do food trucks or hot dogs?
I, I, I mean, personally, I think the food truck is a good idea, but, but, but we got to jump on it right away because it's an event that probably other people have already reached out.
So we're all on board with that, um, and then the types of food trucks, just one with dessert, one with?
Yeah, they have to be different things so that you're not, you know, you're giving the spender the opportunity of his or her own uniqueness, that's what I'm.
Yeah.
So I think that's already a lot of.
I, um, let's see, where's this? This Campbell Boulevard and like Thirty, uh, the other day I went to one and it was dessert. It's called Saint Something and they have like a, like a churro with ice cream, you name it, man, they.
And you want it again?
It was, it was nuts.
That sounds good to me.
Had nuts on it too. That too.
It was nuts and had nuts. Oh, so any other ideas? I think we have a lot to chew on already. And I, I think we just need to start trying to divvy up, uh, the efforts. So Madam Manager and Carrie are already working on the donations, um.
Right, and we can send those to the mayor, the guy now from the letters and probably, who's the other side with him as, as chairman for the committee.
And we're going to add in there wording that if they want to join us in the parade, they can have their banner present in the parade as well.
We'll work on that matter tomorrow.
Perfect, so that's taken care of, uh, the parade, veterans, here to you guys.
Natalie's going to be contacting to the people she knows, the adult organizations, I'm going to contact the JROTCs to see who's going to participate, we'll consolidate who, who's confirmed, the possible and all that. I'll handle the parade itself, which is, you know, police and fire, the route, and then the list of participants and the day of, getting everybody organized. I'll figure out, maybe have them staged this way and come out that way, we'll figure that out, won't take off too many neighbors.
And you go to Sylvania.
I'm happy to coordinate the, the kids' portion.
Okay, okay, perfect.
With Harvey, are we got to talk about a little plan?
Yep, I know for sure, we need to find out how many people are going to show up, first of all.
I think Luciano was saying that it's fine if everyone stages in front of his house first.
Well, it's down that way, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't mind.
It's the, it's the most beautiful street in, uh, in West Miami.
I gotta be in the beach and then, uh, I'll be back.
So it made it Millionaire's Road down this way, it's, uh, it looks nice. Uh, you might want to consider using rec kids maybe instead of Slovenic kids. They got T-shirts already, they can show up.
We could both, if, if the Slovenic kids want to join too, then.
Now, once this, this is all, um, set in stone, I, I will designate, uh, John Michael to do the recreational event. And a Mary Scott will work on the event together, a Patti because she's got all the resources for all the bounce houses, but a Mary's putting, putting everything together.
Name is Sister.
To make sure that all the logistics, are you going to be in town?
I can, I'm making.
I'm not.
I'm not going to be in town.
I'm not.
We're not.
I'll be in London with my grandma.
I'll be in Rome, so.
Can we, can we determine if there's some really long, you know, just living residents here? Because we could, we could use a, uh, you know, a parade, uh, you know, person of honor, what do they call that, uh?
VIPs?
No, no, something marshal, the grand marshal.
Grand marshal.
And I mean, if maybe an old veteran that's still around, there's not that many of them left.
Or the oldest resident.
The oldest residents.
Oh, that's willing to.
Mouser can't, he can't walk.
John Parker, Chile's.
Mouser can't walk.
So we can put him on.
On wheels here.
If they're willing to, you know, maybe.
No, we can, can we?
His wife is also a resident.
Yeah.
They've lived here forever.
Yeah, Mouser's wife.
Harvey Mouser.
You know, he'd probably get a kick.
And we put him in a Jeep, I'll take the top off, but.
He'd probably get a kick out of that. Mouser will.
Think he'd pick it.
How did you get the job you got? Rosemary.
Him and his wife will really get a kick out of that.
Pick up the trash on the way down Sixty Second.
I, I, I just got to throw one over here, nobody had policy to talk about. Um, I know we got a DJ, but, uh, what about live music?
Let me tell you what I have heard, when we have had live music on the Fourth of July, the people have said, why are we, you know, listening to reggaeton and merengue and stuff like that? Is this the?
On the Fourth of July?
Yeah.
No, no, but I, I wasn't, it doesn't have to be reggaeton.
Americana, buddy. John Philip Sousa. Chevrolet and baseball, we got to keep it.
John Philip Sousa.
Americana.
Americana.
But Greenwood is the only deviant from John Philip Sousa that day.
Unless we can get Zac Brown back.
Wrong with you, wow.
I'm against reggaeton.
From the rec center.
Well, why don't we just get all of them? We'll get the Mousers, we'll get John Parker, we'll get them and put them all in a.
City bus like.
Party bus.
You want to be in charge of that?
There you go, good job.
That was a good idea.
You're in charge, you're in charge. You're in charge.
Of what? Let's make a motion, who handles the whole old people on the bus thing? I recommend, uh, Commissioner. I got the patience over fleas, so. It's okay, they can hear.
The, the, a great idea of bringing the, uh, ex-mayors and commissioners, does somebody want to head that?
We can send them a letter saying this is going to be the celebration, the committee chair.
And you're invited to be, uh, uh, participating grand marshals.
Right, perfect, exactly.
Yeah.
And, uh, and then other than that, it's having new department pictures taken and then we have to get updated, uh, letters from different representatives, senators, stuff like that. Uh, which I'll talk to the mayor about that and maybe Manny might be.
Need to talk to the mayor about fundraising.
Oh, I can ask.
He might have an insight there.
Well, that, that's who, yeah.
Let me see this.
Make sure you. Just updating the ones that sent them before to the current reps that we have, simple letters.
Um, have all of you gotten an updated picture, um, so that we can include your picture in the, uh, in the book?
I think so.
Did you all take your pictures after the last election?
No.
I like my old.
I like the old one.
You can use my old picture, Commissioner.
I like the old one, the same.
So least timeline.
To include it in a, in a slide.
Very early tentative timeline, sixteen fifteen staging for parade, parade takes off at five, we're going to shoot for five. Gets down there twenty minutes later, however long it takes, the next thing would be fireworks at nine, but in between, there's the speeches and everything else is hanging on.
Now, now, mind you, what's going to happen is the people are going to be on the sides viewing the parade.
Right.
They're probably going to, you know, follow right behind the end of the parade.
Sure, if we hope.
Yeah.
And don't just go back into their houses.
No.
Well, that's, I think we should stand along the route and kind of guide them, like, hey.
Just got to advertise it early enough.
And we can have officers set up at certain intersections.
Yeah, I got, that's, uh, I'll take that.
Yeah, we're, we're going to talk to Northside County, that Sixth Avenue, we're going to close it for a short period.
Freebie, we can have freebie.
On a given date and time.
You got to bring, bring the golf carts.
I mean, the staging area may be better at Cooper, launching from Cooper Park and taking Sixteen Street down, but I would leave the logistics up to the officers, I don't, I'm not an expert on that field.
It's a lot more parking in that area.
Exactly.
To stage at Cooper.
Stage at Cooper Park instead of down Sixteen.
The parade, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Because if it's here, then where are people parking to start?
And you're passing along the houses too, so if someone.
Yeah, I mean, they would have to stage.
Yeah.
Either at the beginning of, you know, Eighth Street, this way.
Or right in our driveway here.
Or, or both, you know, at Intercolate.
Yeah, the only thing is Sixteen, I think, is Barba County Road.
Sixteen is county on that side, yeah.
So it's.
And on, on both sides, that's a family road.
Yeah.
So we would have to get in touch with the Director of Public Work.
I mean, either way, you're staging in front of people's houses, because even at Cooper, if you stage around Cooper, it's houses, houses. Um, it's one day.
Yeah, but those people, I think, would enjoy what they're seeing, they're seeing fire trucks, they're seeing Humvees, I mean, that's.
That's why Sixteen is better.
Is if, uh, if the county, county rescue.
They're all in Europe anyway, everybody down this road is in Europe anyway.
You know, we got, we, we need to talk to the fire department.
No, actually, I'm, I'm leaving on the eighth. So, so the timing is perfect.
We can't interfere.
You want to go to Greek with them, Greece.
Oh, we're going to see if they can be in the parade too.
It's the public's garage.
Yeah.
We all disappear.
Oh, yeah. Listen, as long as they know, they can just route around it.
No, no. Rescue forty and eighty-fourty-two.
To be in the parade.
Yeah. Or if they have an antique, maybe they have an antique parade piece too, the county or.
Fire, fire.
The Gables has one, the city has one.
City has one, but I don't know if they would.
City has two.
If they're going to do an encounter parade.
I'm sure they are.
Um, so I think we got a lot accomplished tonight.
Do we need a, um, vote on this? Do we need to vote on the parade?
It would be good to get a general consensus because that way the commissioner can present a plan to the commission next week and the commission can say, yay, no, you know, cut this out.
So a short parade, it's not going to cost hardly.
That's probably going to be the one that's going to require a little, just to organize the thing.
It, it is, but in terms of cost.
No, it is.
No, not cost, but to organize it.
Logistics.
Because you, you have to.
That one's about reaching out early and getting confirmation.
Like right now, like right now, yeah.
Like tomorrow, go to South Miami and the Gables and see.
Yeah, I'm going to start calling tomorrow.
So. It'll work out, it'll work out.
Yep.
Oh, by the way, there, there's one thing that we did on the seventieth, um, I don't know if we can do this, but, uh, we had, um, older cities, uh, recognizes, you know, like, um.
You'll get your proclamations back.
Getting a proclamation.
Yeah, that's what.
You got to get, you got to get those, you, you mentioned that in the beginning?
Well, just a couple minutes ago.
Yeah, okay, I was.
Get the letters from all the different cities.
I was tuned out, I was, I was in the break.
Different cities, state. Different cities, state reps and senators, if possible. Alright, so I'll make a motion for approval of what was discussed today.
I think we got a good plan.
Second?
Second. Motion and a second, and then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the last thing to discuss, this meeting was done today as opposed to during next Wednesday, before the next commission meeting, to, like I said, to get the ball rolling. Are you all okay with having the next one three weeks from now, prior to the next commission meeting? Or you want us to keep it on a two-week?
The sooner the better. I mean, time will fly, so I rather...
The problem is, if I may, I'm sorry, if I may, we're gonna have to get some pricing here for some of the logo and the artwork. So it may take us a little bit more than next week.
Right.
Okay.
That's just...
So do we want to keep it staggered, or on, just move it three weeks from now to the next commission meeting and then leave it on that?
June 1st?
How many meetings is that?
What is that, three weeks or so? That would be three weeks.
June 1st.
June 1st?
We have a commission meeting.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of time.
Well, I mean, it's...
June 1st is tight.
Yeah, consider, it's not like we're not doing anything for three weeks. We're all doing, running around doing our stuff.
It'd be a get-together to touch base again on what's been done, but we're still moving.
In three weeks will be June 1st.
We could do two weeks and just have them staggered from the commission meetings and...
Let me ask Quintana how long it would take to put the book together, at least an online copy. Because I know that goods and supplies, you know, they're just falling behind delivery schedule, so let me...
Who's gonna do the little video, the slideshow? He's gonna do that? Can you find out if there's a way for him to put a QR code?
I have a more meeting in the airport.
So when people show up and there's a QR code on the banner, they can sit there like you do at a restaurant, and they can see the slide presentation on their phone?
Sure.
I'm not smart enough to figure that out, but...
The first, I'm okay.
The menu is in the restaurant.
The QR code is...
On the 15th.
I hate that.
It's like what was mentioned. In the next few weeks, we're still gonna be doing things. You know, it's not, we're not gonna be not doing... We're gonna be accomplishing things and it'll be kind of just touch base again, what's still needed. The other alternative is, next week's too soon, and then two weeks from now.
I don't know what those are. That's Google.
You touch it.
Just get lined up with the next commission meeting.
But with the next commission meeting, we will... Before the commission meeting?
It would be before, right. So the meeting's at 7:30, we meet at 6:00.
Slide presentation. Bring it to the 25th.
We should do the 25th.
25th, just to play it safe.
June 1st is already a month out.
Because that way, everybody will see the slide.
Better to have more time than less. If everyone's available.
What are you guys thinking on the dates? The 25th of May or June 1st? For the next meeting that we're gonna get together?
I'm off either way.
I think we should do the 25th because June 1st is already a month away.
So two weeks from now, we're gonna meet again, touch base and go from there.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna... We discussed it and the next meeting will be...
I remember the name.
6:00 PM again. The 25th of May, that'll be two weeks from today. And uh...
So let me ask these questions if I can, so we can recap and what we will rely on Quintana to... Quintana, se puede hacer, and I'm sorry that I'm speaking Spanish, but I think you understand better this way. Quintana, tu puedes preparar un libro similar a lo que tenemos para el 75º aniversario de aquí al 4 de julio? Para tenerlo para el 4 de julio? O un online copy y se mandan a hacer... We'll price them out. Cinco libro, cien libro, or something like that. ¿Cuánto mandamos a secundar?
No recuerdo.
No te recuerdas?
They're on 200. 250, I think.
At least.
So let's price them out. El QR code se puede hacer?
Sí.
En el libro y los banners. You already talked to them about the banners?
Not yet. The slideshow. Tu puedes coger la fotografía que tu tienes del libro que tu preparaste para el 70, y hacer un slideshow también para incluir la fotografía que tu tienes de los comisionados del pasado. Está bien? Okay. Eh, ¿cómo se llama esto? Y cualquier foto antigua que tengamos, Amary va a buscar a ver lo que tiene ella, y yo voy a ver lo que tengo yo. Del año de la condena. Se puede mandar, okay, estamos hablando de hacer unos banners que digan, happy birthday West Miami, o usando el modelo ese.
Yeah, like that. The banners by in that one.
Or that whole thing would be nice too.
See, I think it takes away from the, I think it's too much. I think just the 70.
Just the big one?
I think just the 75 would be more.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, maybe we can add the incorporated part, but not all.
Es mucho...
Those banners are about 300.
A horizontal banner, I think it would be.
Six feet by eight feet.
$300 per banner.
Yeah, the thing, I was gonna go down to the rec to see how many posts we have to put it, but if they're that expensive, maybe one that goes along the fence.
We have a six foot by eight foot of that, what you're looking at.
A horizontal?
It's actually a square.
Where would it hang? Is there a way to prominently display it, you know, high where people can see it?
Can we walk under it to get, while we walk into the rec? Is there a way to do that?
Yeah, we can build a frame for it.
Sí, manera que cuando entre la gente, por abajo el banner. Yeah, that saves money on the multiple banners and it still does the same thing.
Yeah, we can make maybe three or four in total, have three or four.
How much are those?
Three hundred.
They're about $300 each.
The six by six ones?
Six by eight.
Oh, we don't need that many, I don't think, right? Those are pretty big.
Maybe one other one by where the fireworks.
How much are like the smaller ones that look like streamers? Those are cheaper, right? So if we already have a big one, probably...
We don't need anymore.
Yeah, if those little ones are cheap, to do maybe a couple of those, but I don't, we don't need like three of those big ones. Yeah, yeah.
We should probably order car magnets.
Quintana, we have a drone for the parade, yeah. We can do a drone with the video of the parade.
Yep. He has a drone. He always brings a drone, his own drone.
How many, nobody's discussed going to like a car dealership and maybe they...
That's what I was saying, yeah, to get some convertibles.
Yeah, to get some convert, who?
Maybe Gus Machado or something like that.
Rita's husband, son, and two sons are in the car industry.
Oh, great.
He's the general manager, Bernie's the general manager for Ocean Mazda.
Think they can cough up some convertibles, put some magnet, West Miami grand marshal magnets or something?
I mean, if they have them at the lot, yes. They sell used cars, so...
Who's gonna be the point of contact for that? Is that somebody you know?
Yes, Rita's son.
Oh, okay. Oh, see, okay, perfect.
We'll have her call Fernando.
And if it's doable, then we'll have to order some car magnets.
Car magnets, depending on the number of cars that we have.
Okay, I guess I could always take the top off the Jeep too. I'm willing to wash it once.
Um, Quintana, there's otra cosa, el libro, los banners, ah, hay un... Como un spot, like kind of thing, que tu puedes preparar. ¿Tu te acuerdas que lo hiciste? I think we had it for the art festival, the 70th anniversary, que tu proyectas y sale el emblema que de los 75 años.
Como Batman. Como Batman.
Como Batman, there you go. Sí. Se puede hacer con el proyecto. Tú eso lo puedes hacer.
El proyecto lo compramos para las elecciones, vamos a darle uso.
Yeah, so we can do it.
What about a birthday cake?
We need a birthday cake.
It's a 75th birthday.
Big, big cake.
And then the candles, the candles could kind of be like blown out when the fireworks are gonna go off in the background.
Bueno, va a ser de noche, pero no...
Maybe cupcakes.
Cupcakes more.
No, cupcakes from Publix.
También.
Get him to donate the...
Sparklers.
A bunch of them.
Sparklers.
Yeah, that's a streamer.
So they don't donate anything anymore.
Yeah, it's a birthday party.
Greater Miami would donate a pre-cut cake with a seal of the city on top. And that way it's pre-cut and all we need...
Or like a pull apart.
Well, that's a lot easier, otherwise it's just gonna be...
Perfect, yeah. Yeah, like he said, the cupcakes.
Cupcakes is the ideal.
The pull apart.
Hacen un cake para la ceremonia, lo que es el video y eso.
Right.
Vice Mayor, they have the mini blind.
They have the cakes that are like...
Look at his face.
It looks like it's a giant piece, but it's cupcakes. So you grab them and then it just goes.
Gotta pay his dues. I didn't raise him soft.
Si sale todo, es ok.
Only in and out of his country.
Soft no.
Yes.
Soft no.
And they'll have Fourth of July decorations.
You want me to lend you my glasses? I'm about to start crying over here.
Yeah, we need blinds over here.
About to start crying over here. Maybe we put one of the eight by six banners right here. It's worth 300 bucks, I think. Alright, so...
I think the food is one of the last things that are remaining.
We can reach out to some of the vendors or the food trucks to make sure that they are available.
Yeah, because they may have plans already.
I think that should be like a, like right now.
By the next meeting, we have to have that already secured, right?
Yeah. Do you have contacts in that area?
But the problem is, is I don't want to make a decision that may go against the grain of the will of the commission.
So we have to wait until next week. So we're gonna have hot dogs, cotton candy, popcorn, watermelons, no hot dogs.
No, no, if you have all that, then the food truck, then...
Watermelon and food trucks. And a cotton candy machine. We're not gonna have the hot dogs.
If you have the food trucks, no.
Yeah, it doesn't, as a matter of fact, they ask you those questions.
They will come if you have a hot dog.
Well...
The food truck could be a fancy hot dog and burger food truck.
Or do you want the hot dogs and just cancel out the food trucks? Idea?
I don't know, I mean, you got four or five kids, I mean, think about it, kids will eat hot dogs. They will not eat corn on the cob, they will not eat, you know, they might not go for the food truck, uh, food. It's a good point too, trying to feed a whole family.
All I'm saying is, you gotta go one or the other, please.
Didn't we have a Cooper Park where we actually had hot dogs and we had the food trucks?
No, no, that day, it was last Halloween, remember? We brought out the food trucks.
Not last Halloween.
No, there was a movie night or something, two eat, that we had like seven food trucks.
I haven't worked an event with a chipmunk.
Now, the food trucks that we used, the food truck that we used for that event was chicken tenders, hot dogs, hamburgers, fries, chips, and juice and soda.
So who's who paid for that? The parents?
The parents.
What does it cost us to bring the food trucks over? Nothing. They show up, they make their money.
All they need to do is show us their license, their...
Their inspections.
Their inspection schedule and their insurance.
You know, I mean, I don't know, you know, people aren't like cattle, man, you know, they're so used to having the cotton candy, the hot dogs, the watermelon, and if we don't have that, and we just have the food trucks, I don't know.
I think you're probably right on that.
It's always been that way, that's the tradition.
Were they donations last time or we paid for them?
Greater Miami donated some food.
Hot dogs, snow cones, cotton candy, watermelon, and water.
Two hundred and fifty.
Alright, that's plenty of money.
So can we find out if we will do it again?
I would go, not for the food trucks. I would go with hamburgers and hot dogs.
We always do that.
And cotton candy and stuff for the kids.
We always do that in this, and it's free.
All says you can't have both.
Logistically. I agree with that, I agree with that. You're gonna have a bunch of kids there, okay, and they're all gonna be hungry, okay, and there's gonna be two food trucks.
And the lines and that, it's not for the Fourth of July.
Look at the lines for the hot dogs. And that's pretty quick, it's like, they gotta prepare the food.
I'm looking at it more from my Cuban roots perspective.
That's it.
They're used to.
Hamburgers, forget it.
No, no, I'm in agreement with you, Vice Mayor. All I'm saying is you can't have both.
No, no.
Okay.
No, no, both we're not gonna have.
Then let's make a decision. Cotton candy, snow cones, watermelon, and water.
Well, I'm for that.
And if we, and popcorn, and if we can get Latin American, if we can get that pizza place to donate some sandwiches and pizza, they will have... Maybe we can get the local businesses to donate food pizzas. And it'll be a little bit more food for whoever gets there first.
But if we... When do I give out the hot dogs?
Logistically, it'll be a mess.
Those people are gonna be like, hey, let me get a sandwich back there.
No, no.
And that gets ugly.
They said that line.
Yeah, you're right.
The grandma's line included will come and get for the whole family. Six hot dogs, and then if I have sandwiches back there. I say aye because I'm gonna be there.
So why don't we just not switch that up?
And I have to see those faces of, hey!
Everybody agrees that...
And then half the city back there eating.
That's the Fourth of July. I agree with that.
Sir, you're good with that? We're good with hot dogs and watermelons and food trucks for movie nights?
As we've always had. That's much better.
You know, it's only two food trucks, the lines, and they gotta put in there, and then the kids are gonna get antsy, and you give them a hot dog, that's it, they're eating, and that's it.
Water, juice, tradition.
And it's free.
Or popcorn, or cotton candy, that's what they want.
The food trucks are when we bring the candlelit chamber music to Cooper Park.
We put the operator...
Have you seen those concerts they're doing locally?
I haven't been to one, but uh...
We'll be in the middle of summer, so we'll have...
Banner on there to bring people to the restaurant.
So that part's easy then. We'll keep that tradition.
Charito, future daddy, they can be next to it.
Yeah, that's, that makes it less complicated.
Less hassle.
Keep it piss, keep it simple.
It's already something that's been done before.
Yeah, it's already a lot that's going into this.
They might do like pizza rolls.
My mom would have been like...
Watermelon, hot dogs.
One more, Julio.
And the watermelon.
People congregate to that area.
Alright, so we have a good start. You gotta make sure we don't get those green hot dogs.
They always disappear.
Let me see your baby.
Oh, yeah.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn, meeting adjourned. See you May 25th.
So it's May 25th?
25th, at 18:00.
May 25th at 18:00.
We agree that two weeks is probably a better...
I'll be here.
Be watching your shit.